Okay, whenever you're ready, Sean.
Okay, I'd like to bring this being to order with start of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I'd like to take a moment of silence for first responders and veterans that have passed away. Like, moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
In the...
Let me do the disclosure.
You have to do the announcement, I got it, yep.
Yep. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, C 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Could I make a motion to take item L out of order at this time? I think it's important with the storm going on around us, even though it doesn't look like it now. If we lose power and we need this vote, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This recalls a roll call vote.
Sorry about that. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All righty. Moving to petition 2020-015, 2020 state primary election warrant. Town Council of the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, assembled, accepts as a matter of record the attached 2020 state primary election warrant as provided by the town clerk. This is required that the town council accepts and approves the attached warrant as a matter of record. I will take a motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gallagher?
I guess, Mr. President, to you, Ian, how do we sign this?
We have an electronic signature. I believe that that's allowable during the pandemic.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All righty, we'll move on to our agenda now. Approval of minutes from previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Both? July 7th and July 28th?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. President, just make sure, we may need to split them if there were people absent, I can't remember.
I don't believe there were, and I haven't looked at...
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. All right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Yes? Mr. Wood, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. All right, announcements from the president, I do have an announcement. The Bridgewater Housing Authority is seeking candidates to fill the vacant seat on the board. The authority has 166 elderly, non-elderly, disabled, and family state public housing units. The board is responsible for implementing policies, approving contracts, attending board meeting, excuse me, board member training for certification and monthly board meetings. Although housing experience is not necessary, the person must have compassion for low-income persons from culturally diverse socio-economic environments. A social service background would be helpful. Please send a letter of interest to either Karen Rudd, karen.rudd@bridgewaterha.org, or Mr. Dutton, mdutton@bridgewaterma.org. All letters received will be reviewed at the August 19, 2020 board meeting. I do not have any proclamations, citizens open forum. If there are any citizens looking to speak, please do so now. I ask that you keep it to three minutes, and again, as a reminder, during open forum, you're allowed to address the council, but we will not have any interaction.
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. All righty.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I just have a point of order for one second, please, to ask the town attorney something?
I don't think I have an option on that, so yes.
Okay. We know that there may be some citizens in the town without power and without the ability to access the meeting, unfortunately. Obviously, there are citizens in town who can't access the meeting if they don't have the technology to do so either. That being said, is this okay within the open meeting law as redefined by the governor's executive order?
Yeah, it's perfectly fine. So, because we're also recording the meeting and citizens obviously would have a fair opportunity after the fact to address issues, or at the next meeting, depending on what went on today, going forward is perfectly fine.
And one further question, again, on the open meeting law. We did have an item added to the agenda yesterday, which doesn't conform with the 48-hour rule. And I didn't see that it was classified as an emergency, can we still take it up at this point in time?
I didn't see what that item was, what was the item?
It was the appointment to the Board of Registars of Mr... I can't...
Mortis.
Mortis, yes.
So that wasn't put on within 48 hours?
It was published yesterday, I believe.
So I would refrain from that appointment until the next hearing.
Okay, and there's no emergency, Mr. Dutton? Or maybe Mrs. Hunt, I see her on the call as well, if we can let her speak, Mr. President?
Actually, yeah. Mrs. Hunt, if you're on the call, I believe there is some sort of urgency, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, thank you very much. There is an emergency with this in that it was recently learned that the two Republican members of our Board of Registars of Voters were not eligible to be registrars of voters, and so we've been scrambling to try to replace them and have a full Board of Registars ready for our elections. I'm quite concerned to have everyone on board and everything running smoothly for the election. If you don't appoint tonight, I won't have a chance to get the signature stamp and all of the things that have to happen before the state primary, which is a priority for me. By the Republican Town Committee just yesterday gave me this nominee, and I would very much like to have him on board, thank you.
And I don't dispute any of those needs, I just defer to Mr. Rollins and ask about the open meeting law and what we need to do at this point in time, thank you.
Well, I would say if we'll be left without a registrar of voters before the next meeting, which I'm not sure that would be the case, then certainly you all could vote it as an emergency, but you'll have to articulate what specifically the emergency is in this context for us not noticing this in the proper timeframe. So, I don't know that not having some of the stuff available in particular is an emergency if this person is still going to be on the Board of Registars in time for the primary. So, I will leave that up to you all, but I would probably say that that is not an emergency, that an emergency would be if we don't vote tonight and we have to wait, that there would not be a Republican representative on the Board of Registars. I would think that would be probably an emergency.
And if I may say again, I think that may be the case. We don't know that we're going to have another representative, and we don't know that we will have time to make the timestamp. We're even cutting it very close if we start it tomorrow, if this gentleman is appointed and ready to get that done.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, our next council meeting isn't till the 8th, and the primary's on the 1st.
We could always do a special meeting.
I would, and again, Mr. Rollins, in that particular case, is it up to the council to determine if we move forward, or is there some legal precedent that we have to take into consideration?
No, I mean, I think the council can declare and take a vote that the appointment is an emergency. I think you just have to articulate as to why it is an emergency, and if that is the case, and probably it is an emergency if this person is not going to be in place so that we have a full Board of Registars of Voters prior to the primary, that probably would suffice as an emergency, if that's what you're saying our next scheduled meeting is.
All right, so what I'd like to do, let's go with appointments, the reappointments, let's get those done, and then when we get to item B, if we need to have additional discussion, let's do it then and figure out our next steps. So, what I'd like to do for annual reappointments is I would like to entertain a motion to ratify all reappointments.
So... Second.
We gotta move, we gotta, okay, we got a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to thank everybody for being willing to serve, it's much appreciated.
I would ditto that sentiment. All right, this requires a roll call vote, and?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, for item B, Board of Registars, Stephen Mortis. I think with the prior discussion in regards to the timing of the state primary, also with what we currently have going on with COVID, everything like that, I would say that we do have an emergency need to make this appointment, but I will open it up to the council for additional discussion.
Couple questions.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a point of clarification. According to my schedule, our next meeting is September 1st, not September 8th?
No.
Am I right or wrong?
Wrong.
It's been changed.
It's been changed, yeah, because they changed the primary.
Okay, so since we don't meet till after the September 1st primary, I think it does kind of create some sort of emergency that we do have the full representation as the town clerk has indicated on that day. So, I'm comfortable with appointing this person. I understand his name is not on the agenda, but the subject matter of appointments is.
Mr. President, just for point of order, I would ask that someone move for the fact that this is an emergency and then the discussion happen within that context.
Mr. President, thank you, I'll make a motion that we make this item be an emergency as clarified by the town clerk and that we move forward with this appointment.
Seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I just refer us to Section 27B of the Charter, emergency measures. An emergency measure shall be introduced in the form and manner prescribed for measures generally, except that it shall be plainly designated as an emergency measure and contain statements after the enacting clause declaring that an emergency exists and describing its scope and nature in clear and specific terms. A preamble which declares and defines the emergency shall be separately voted on and shall require the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the town council. An emergency measure may be passed with or without amendment or rejected at the meeting at which it is introduced. No measure making a grant, renewal, or extension, whatever its kind or nature, or a franchise or special privilege shall be passed as an emergency measure and except as provided by any general or special law. No such grant, renewal, or extension shall be made, otherwise than by ordinance. After its adoption, an emergency measure shall be published as prescribed for other adopted measures. An emergency measure shall become effective upon adoption or at such later time as it may specify. So, I think we need to comply with the Charter to do this.
I agree.
If we can do that, so...
I think you have to articulate, as I stated earlier, I think you will have to articulate what the emergency is, and when there is an order put forth on the emergency, there will have to be a preamble that mirrors or comes close to mirroring what you have articulated as both the preamble and explanation for the emergency.
Okay, then.
I don't...
Mr. Wood?
I don't think it's a mention.
Thank you, so we've heard that there's two on the Board of Registers that may be ineligible, but this name is just one. Are we replacing Sandra Wright or are we replacing Joe Gillis? And I have a follow-up related to Joe Gillis.
Well, actually, this is the, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dutton, but this is your appointment, correct?
No.
Technically, it is my appointment, however, I think under the Charter, the Board of Registars is essentially appointed by the respective parties, and they flow through the town manager's office just as a routine appointment, but they're effectively chosen by the respective parties.
So, Mrs. Hunt, if you're still on the call, so both the Republican representatives cannot serve any longer on the Board of Registars, correct?
That is correct. According to Mass. General Law, each of them serve on another committee or commission. One is an elected county commissioner, and one is serving on the Cable Advisory Committee in Bridgewater, and that disqualifies them from serving the Board of Registars of Voters.
Mr. Wood?
So, Mr. George, I suggest that if we go forward with this appointment, we may get to replace Sandra Wright and that Mr. Dutton follow up with Mr. Gillis, because I think Mr. Gillis would probably, you know, the Cable Committee's not doing much, so I think he should voice his preference, and I know that he's reached out to Mr. Dutton a couple times and hasn't heard back related to the subject. So, if we move forward tonight, I suggest that we move forward to replace Sandra Wright, who is a county commissioner, and that's clear that that's a probable conflict.
So, thank you, Mr. Wood. Now, point of clarification, I don't know if that goes to Mr. Rollins or Mrs. Hunt, but do we as a council get to determine who gets replaced, or is that the party?
What we're doing is appointing.
Gets to determine. I'm just asking, I mean, do we have the ability to say that this person's going to replace one or the other? I don't know, I just want to make sure if we do this, we do this right.
Are you waiting for me to respond? Or Michael?
Anyone who has any knowledge on this, I will gladly listen to.
My thought, just my thoughts about it, are Mrs. Wright understood clearly that she needed to step down, and she is the president of the Republican Town Committee. She did call a special meeting from them, and she did get this... They have two members who could possibly qualify to fill this position, and one was at their meeting, so this is the name that you have before you. He has said that he would serve, and I think she would be fine with him replacing her. Mr. Gill has contacted me, said that he has tried to contact Mr. Dutton a few times, hasn't been able to get through to him, so I agree with Counselor Wood that Mr. Gillis would like to leave the Cable Advisory Committee, continue to serve on the Board of Registars of Voters, and that would be helpful to us as the town clerk's office.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. All right, is there any other discussion before I ask for a little guidance in regards to next steps? I'm under the impression that the council would like to move forward on this, but I also want to satisfy the legal requirement. So, is there any other discussion on this before moving forward in regard to getting more clarity? Anyone? All right, so, Mr. Rollins, is this something that we talked through in regards to the preamble and things like that, vote on it, and then put it into the pen-to-paper? Or is this something that has to be prepared, has to be socialized, and then move forward? This is well out of my area of expertise, so I need some guidance here.
Sure, so in a perfect world, we would have had an emergency order prepared, but obviously, it's an emergency, so that order is not prepared. So, I think if it is clearly articulated what the emergency is, I think we can put that pen to paper after, so long as it is made clear to the public that this vote is being taken under the provision of the Charter as stated by Mr. Fitzgibbons, and that the reasons it is an emergency are as follows, and make sure, you know, we clarify exactly why it's an emergency and has to be voted on today. And obviously, part of that is we don't have a full amount of the Board of Registars of Voters, and our next meeting would not give us enough time to round out that full Board of Registars of Voters. So, obviously, there is an emergency that exists, that we do have to vote on this, otherwise, we'd wait till the next meeting. So, those are the things you just need to try to articulate in some fashion, and obviously, we can put it pen-to-paper order after the fact, but it is an emergency if you all feel that those reasons are enough to vote that there's an emergency. And again, as articulated by Mr. Fitzgibbons, there has to be a vote, number one, that there is an emergency, and that vote has to carry two-thirds, and then you would vote on the actual ratification thereafter.
Right, understood. Mr. Fitzgibbons, thank you.
I appreciate that. I really do. We keep referring to our next meeting. Our next meeting after our July meeting was this meeting, we called a special meeting. Now, I'm not presuming to say what the council will vote, either whether we do it tonight or whether we do it at the earliest possible time we can do it by having a special meeting. What I am saying is that the public wasn't noticed that there was an emergency. We got the appointment yesterday. Somebody could have written a preamble to declare an emergency, it was not done. So, obviously, whoever submitted the appointment didn't think it was an emergency, that it was okay to submit less than 48 hours before we had the agenda posted. We're creating an emergency here, and what Mr. Rollins said about putting pen-to-paper after we have a vote on it as to why we did it, sounds a lot like you got to vote for the bill before you know what's in the bill. I'm not in favor of this, let's just, what's the shortest time we can have a meeting, a special meeting, and Mr. Rollins? And let the town clerk go about saying, "I'm just going to assume the town council appoints this person" and doesn't stall her timeline.
Well, certainly with the noticing, and I would think just the basic town logistics, next week is probably a feasible time to have your next meeting to vote on this. I don't disagree with anything you're saying, what I'm telling you is that it's a two-thirds vote, and that's exactly right. You can make that pitch relative to whether or not you believe it to be an emergency, right? And certainly, if it isn't, we have a special meeting.
I believe we can post a special meeting tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock and have a special meeting 48 hours later and get it done. That's my belief, but I may be wrong.
Mr. Fitz... I lost you, sorry about that.
Did you lose me?
Yeah, or I might have been lost, either way.
I think the town council president can call a special meeting whenever he wants, he could call it at this moment in time, we could post it tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., and we could have a meeting 48 hours later in accordance with the open meeting law, and we could have an emergency preamble written that we could, you know, vote on appropriately, see what's actually there as to why it's an emergency, not just make things up on the fly, and then say, "Yes, we do want to appoint this person." What I'm really concerned about is the process. I would love to appoint the person. I want everybody to, you know, get involved that can, but what I'm concerned about is the process, because if somebody else wanted to be on it or whatever, I don't know what the story is, but I just feel like it was a last-minute addition that didn't need to be added, you know?
Yeah, and I don't disagree, I mean, I certainly think there's an open meeting issue with it, which is why the only way to avoid it under our Charter is under the emergency provision, but even in that context, right, there's still some risk involved open meeting-wise, because you still have the open meeting law that's...
Right, but as you said earlier, if this is an emergency order, which I... My understanding is the council can determine that, then we can move forward with the appointment, correct? Mr. Rollins? Do we lose him? He might be tired of us.
Mr. President?
Hold on one sec, hold on, Mr. Wood, I just want to see if we lost him.
I'm back now, you guys, my power keeps coming and going.
That's okay. So, I don't know what you heard, and I apologize, I'll repeat it. So, you know, we can go back and forth on in regards to this is an emergency or not. I think there's a compelling reason on both sides. So, Mr. Rollins, if we bring this to a vote, and there's a two-thirds vote that we accept this as an emergency order, then we can move forward with the appointment, correct?
That is correct.
So, I'll listen to more discussion, I will say, well, let me listen to more before I have my put. Mr. Wood, you had something to add?
Yeah, I mean, normally with appointments, and we didn't tonight with all the others that we did, but I know, I think I know everyone we appointed. Normally with appointments, we have some sort of bio background in terms of, you know, background. I understand, you know, the Board of Assessors normally has light lifting, sometimes they have a hearing or two, but, you know, other than a name, I really don't know anything about this person, so, you know, it's fine to... I guess it's a recommended appointment, but other than that, I really don't know anything about this person, so it'd be great to hear something.
Any other input? Mr. Gallagher?
Just quickly, Mr. President, I think that... I think we're safe to move forward with this appointment based on what Mr. Fitzgibbons, Council of Fitzgibbons said, as long as we word it in the sense of what we're doing. You know, again, I don't see this as, this is not an order, this is not a resolution, this is an item under appointments that's already on the agenda and was posted. Yeah, the name was added later. You know, according to our Charter, you know, maybe that's the technicality here, but I think we're safe to go forward with this, and, you know, if we want to bring everybody on here in so we can interview them like Mr. Wood is suggesting, you know, we're taking up a lot of time for something, so I'm comfortable moving forward this as long as we use the appropriate language in the motion.
I'm not saying interview, but even a statement of interest, you know, or something to that regard. I mean, if this were a committee like a... to that regard. I mean, if this were, if this were a committee like a planning board that's a five-year appointment, you know, it might be dangerous to slip a name in right at the last minute that's not on the agenda, that wasn't noticed in forty-eight hours, that, you know, just, you know, no one knows about. But we could do the same procedure that we're contemplating here, whereas we do have a couple of weeks before the person needs to be on the board. We could have a special meeting, as Council of Fitzgivens says.
Any other comments? Well, I'm gonna say that, under the current circumstances, with the town clerk being able to reach out to Mr. Mortis, him accepting, we've got a state primary coming up, I do not have an issue with classifying this as an emergency in order to add someone to the Board of Registars that we need. That's my personal opinion. So with that being said, we'll have a roll call vote. We need a two-thirds vote in order for this to be classified as an emergency. Anne?
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodas?
No.
Mr. Fitzgivens?
No.
Six in favor, three against.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to ratify the appointment.
A motion to ratify the appointment?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? This requires a roll call vote?
Mr. Fitzgivens?
No.
Mr. Colm Bodas?
No.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two against.
Ready. Item F hearings, we have none. Item G license transactions, we do not have any. Item H presentations, Charter Review Committee. I see Chairman Ivaldi on the Zoom, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna try and share my screen here. I have a few slides to run through. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. To keep things moving quickly, if possible, I'd like to run through my slides and then take questions and comments at the end. Over the next fifteen, twenty minutes or so, I'd like to take the opportunity to share what the CRC has been up to since we started meeting back in June. Just to let you know who we are, the committee includes myself, Cleone Mainville as vice chair, Darren Boston, Thomas Golden, Steve Purcell, and Scott Pitta. We do currently have one vacancy created by the loss of one of our members several weeks ago, which I know the council president is addressing for us. Like any other newly formed committee, we started getting, by getting organized and establishing rules and procedures for how we would operate. We then began to familiarize ourselves with relevant documentation, as well as discuss lessons learned from key people involved in the prior CRC effort. As we began to think about developing a plan for the upcoming year, it became clear that we needed to gather data, citizens, and key town personnel. Putting a structure around our effort also meant that we needed to establish some baseline assumptions and some priorities. While much of this initial work is now behind us, there is still more to do as we hope to finalize an overall schedule by the end of this month. In terms of grounding ourselves, we decided that since so much work had already been done by the prior CRC in 2014, that we should use their recommendations as our baseline, rather than start from a blank slate. And for comparison purposes, we would also use the 2018 Special Act, which included the Town Council Rules and Procedures and State Legislature inputs. Creating realistic expectations is important to ensure future success. So in this regard, we want our focus to be in those areas of the Charter that will result in adding benefits, such as improved efficiency and increased effectiveness, as well as fixing those key areas of town government that may need additional fine tuning. It's been over twelve years since the last citizen survey was conducted by the Town Government Study Committee. So we feel it's important to gather feedback from the residents, given that we now have ten years of Charter experience under our belts. Lastly, and probably most importantly, is the need to modify the Charter update process, to replace the all-or-nothing approach that was used prior with one that now offers more flexibility and speed of delivery. Whoops. It's worth taking a brief moment to review the process from the last Charter update attempt initiated back in 2014, especially for those counselors who may not have been around at the time. There were basically three phases. Sorry, I'm on the wrong slide here. I'm having problems here, technically. I don't know why. Okay, here we go. There were basically three phases spanning four and a half years of time before reaching the voters in April of 2019. One year for the Charter Review Committee, two and a half years for the Town Council, and one year for the State Legislature. Since this was the first major look at the original 2010 Charter, it would be reasonable to expect a longer-than-usual process. But I don't think anyone expected it would have taken four and a half years. So based on what we know about how the prior process evolved, we now have the ability to approve, improve, and shorten the process by using a multiple option approach. The first step could be to use the amendment process found in Mass. General Law, Chapter 43b, Section 10, for all of the non-controversial items, which can be defined separately. This method requires a two-third vote of the council, requires a thirty-day review by the Attorney General, and requires voter approval. The second phase, a second option, is to use the Home Rule Petition Statute or the Special Act process for all the controversial items, which again, can be defined separately. This method also requires Town Council and State Legislature approval, but technically does not require voter approval. It is traditional, however, for voter approval, and most Special Acts do contain provisions requiring it. But Section 8 of the Home Rule Petition does not actually require it. Both processes could also utilize multiple ballot questions and could be delivered at different times during the year. Here's a view of how this might look, with examples taken from the 2018 Special Act. Using the amendment process, all of the miscellaneous grammatical changes can be packaged into a general bundle article. The other articles listed could also potentially be included, since they aren't necessarily contentious in nature. So there were some definitions in Article I. There was some language changed in the effective time for measures in Article II, the term of office for the library trustees, and so forth. The Home Rule Petition method would then be used to include the more debatable items, such as those listed below: pointed versus selected town clerk, Town Council term limits, the stipend, and the recall provision. Again, this is just a very high-level view of what is possible, and obviously requires much more thought and due diligence to understand and decide ultimately what will work best for Bridgewater.
Sorry for interrupting. I think you're still on Slide 3 on the presentation on the screen. Are you more advanced on that?
I am. I am. I'm sorry. I am sure...
Yeah, Mr. Ivaldi, we can hear you, and the screens are, I mean, the slides are advancing, so that's okay. Keep going.
What are you saying now?
Establish baseline assumptions and priorities. Slide 3.
Maybe, Ed, if you just unshared your screen and then shared it again, it would catch up. Okay, now we're looking.
Yep, there you go. There you go.
All right. All right. So, this is, this is pretty much, I think, what I just discussed. Examples of the modified process, using the amendment process for some of the non-controversial items, and then using the Special Act process for the other items. All right, I apologize for that. Sorry. Do you want me to go back or not?
No, nope, that's good. You're advancing, so that's good.
Okay. For the bottom line...
I apologize. Sorry, Ed, I was just gonna mention, maybe you could just send it to us after the meeting, so we would have it.
I can do. I'll send that through, Anne.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry.
So, the bottom line is that we believe that both of these approaches could potentially be utilized during the 2021 calendar year, but that it would require high levels of focus on the part of the Charter Review Committee, the Town Council, and our state legislators. Education and commitment of the Town Council would be a key factor in making this happen. Voter education and engagement would also be necessary to ensure the public understands what they would be voting on. And when using the Home Rule Petition approach, it would be important to have the governor's approval on the Special Act one to two months in advance of the election. So based on where we are today, the CRC team believes that we have a path forward. We just need to fill in a few more of the details. We hope to have a fairly good roadmap by the end of this month that would show key milestones for the second half of this year, 2020, and all of next year, 2021. We expect to complete our data gathering by the end of September, which would include the citizen survey, personal interviews of key town personnel, and an initial round of public forums that we will conduct in September. Keeping the public in the loop on this effort is very important. So we also plan to develop some educational material, as well as to help in the education process. Likewise, we want to keep you updated on a regular basis. So I don't know if we want to have a standing agenda item each month where we can update you, or just schedule it as needed. Once we have a more complete view of all the required steps needed for the rollout, we can share something, hopefully, in the early, mid-September timeframe. Okay. As I conclude, the committee would like to share several concerns that could impact how we ultimately achieve our goals. The first concern relates to how important the Council views our work. Are we essentially viewed by the Council as just doing a study with results for your consideration, or will our recommendations be taken seriously and acted upon? Second, since the bulk of activity from the last effort centered within the Town Council itself, specifically the Rules and Procedures Subcommittee, how can we minimize the amount of rework and duplication between what the CRC delivers and the Town Council? And lastly, as this is kind of related to the first concern as well, how can we ensure early on in the process that the CRC recommendations will be adopted? The bottom line is that the committee is passionate about the work we are doing. We all want to see it make a difference for our town. What we don't want to do is spend a year working on this effort, only to realize later on that the results were not used as intended. Thank you for your time, Mr. President. I'll turn it back to you for any comments and questions, if time allows.
Okay. We have time. Any questions for Mr. Ivaldi?
I'll have a question.
Yeah, hold on one sec. Mr. Ivaldi, you need to make and host again. But go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Ivaldi, some of the recommendations that were made with the last round of, with the first review of the Charter, do you think that some of those same potential changes will come back to the Council to try to implement, whether it be through legislation or just go right to the ballot, some of the same things that failed at the ballot a year and a half ago?
I think that's highly possible, yes.
And I also just want to comment that although I certainly will respect the work that you do, and I just think that, I don't know if we can really make promises tonight that, you know, there is a process. Our Charter tells us how to handle something like this. We ask you, you know, committee, to do the work as far as review the Charter, make recommendations. But the way it happened last time, it does go to a committee. A committee reviews it. They may change things. They may not change things. I would hope that whatever goes to the Rules and Procedures Committee from your recommendations, that you and your committee are in on those meetings, so you can strongly advocate why that committee should not change your work and so forth, so we don't have a lot of wasted time on you and your committee's part. So I hope everybody works together on that. But there, you know, no guarantees, I guess, but I hope that we can. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ivaldi, thank you for the presentation this evening with respect to the organization of the committee and the goals for the process. I think I'm most concerned about the level of citizen input into the process. And I think you had spoken about citizen input by way of responses to a questionnaire. Is that the approach that would be utilized?
So, we've developed, or in the final stages of developing a citizen survey that we will be sending out through social media. So, and that will happen probably towards the end of this month and into September. We'll also be conducting some public forums. You know, as we know, there's apathy in town about things in town government. So we're, although we're hopeful that we get a decent response, and the data can help us in our, you know, efforts, we're also being realistic that, you know, we don't know what kind of response we're gonna get. So, we're hoping, you know, in the 500 range, you know. And that would give us, you know, some idea of what are people thinking about the Charter in general, and some of the recommendations that are gonna be on the table.
Thank you. I think the outreach from the committee would be very important, and I think that would be considerably persuasive to the Council.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Colm Bodas?
I'd just like to make one point to kind of piggyback on that. I would just hope that the public comment period would extend into the, beyond just the summer, given that certain, some families are aware, not as tuned into local politics during the summer. I would hope that it would include, continue into September for at least a few weeks.
That's a good, Pete, a good comment, Pete. And we can certainly can do that, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ivaldi?
Yep, this is Mrs. Loesch. I raised my hand. I'm not sure if you can see it, however.
I can only see nine. I have to scroll, so I apologize, Mrs. Loesch. Go right ahead.
Just to be clear, the public has an opportunity to go to every single Charter Review Committee meeting that has been posted and open, to also put their inputs in since the start of June and through this process. So there's not, this is not going to be limited to just the survey. It'll be open to every open meeting per the usual guidelines, correct?
That's correct. And we have had a handful of people join, but, you know, again, we just got started. So maybe as things go forward, the interest will be piqued, and more people will participate.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Just a quick suggestion. Couple years ago, we put out a town-wide postcard with the contact information for all the council. I don't think it was that expensive to do that. So you and the committee might consider doing that, just to maybe open up awareness that this is going on, maybe lead them to the survey, or even tell them more information about the committee, just to generate some more interest that way. It's probably under 500 bucks to reach everybody in town with the postcard.
I think our main vehicle is gonna be social media, whether it be Facebook, Twitter, or whatever, but I think we can also consider mailing, depending on the funding that we have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anyone else? So, Mr. Ivaldi, I'll leave you with a couple of my thoughts. So, first, I do not look at the Charter Review Committee as a fact-finding group. I look at that committee as taking facts, taking public input, putting it together, and coming up with a and coming up with a comprehensive recommendation on areas that we need to improve the charter, change, delete, whatever the case may be. I will also echo Mr. Gallagher that when it does go into committee, it is the committee's responsibility to take a look at it, obviously go through discussions. I would expect, you know, your committee to be there to, you know, answer clarifying questions, give context, whatever the case may be, so that whatever comes out of committee that comes in front of the council for whatever next steps, you know, we're all very confident that it's the right thing to do pending it being approved by whatever body needs to approve it. So, please don't walk away thinking that it's just coming up with a checklist and then it's up to us to figure out how to make it happen. I fully expect to look at you guys to give us that guidance as well. All righty. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. President? Yeah, Ayesha had her hand up.
Absolutely. Sorry.
No, no problem. A question to you, through you to either the town attorney or town manager.
Knowing how the charter went up previously and to some of the points that are on the current Charter Review Committee's PowerPoint, short timeline, can you speak to how we're going to be able to update the ballot and ensure that we're going to have some autonomy to create it, because last time we did not, and just want to speak through that process?
I can speak to that a little bit. I've already discussed some of the possible options with the Charter Review Committee. I did attend one of their virtual sessions. And I think, based on recommendations that they make, I may be coming to you all or whoever is going to be sponsoring each individual or possible amendment with some recommendations of my own as to what the process should look like for those amendments. So, I think, my hope is that we can maybe parse out some of the things that you all may determine should end up going to the voters after it goes through the legislature versus maybe some things that are typographical errors in the charter or things that lack some of the real substance that some of the other issues have. So, yeah, I mean, I'm going to work in concert with them when they begin making recommendations about, you know, maybe which ones get sponsored as through one process versus another. So, yeah, that is something I have discussed with the Charter Review Committee.
Any other questions? All right, again, thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Moving on to the Town Manager's streamlined report, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dutton.
All right, here's my streamlined report.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. If Mr. Ivaldi could hand me back the host, that would be great.
I am trying to find where I do that, Ann. I'm sorry.
If you click the three dots on, next to my name on my video.
Make host. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Dutton. Thank you.
Now, Ann is also the host, much like Alex Trebek. Another job, Ann.
I thought Ann was butting in to cut my report short, so I guess I'll continue. The Mitchell School update, I just want to give you a brief update on that. The demo contractor is actually ahead of schedule. And for anybody that's seen that site, the old Mitchell School is effectively gone, but there is remaining work to be done on site over the next couple of weeks. They are ahead of schedule, obviously, because we weren't expecting this to be done until later in August and certainly within their demo budget. We did have a concern from the fire department about a sizable drop near one of the foundation walls that's actually not being removed right now. And the OPM and the demo contractor will take care of that and, excuse me, make that situation safer within the next couple of weeks to the satisfaction of the fire department. There was a meeting, Mitchell School Building Committee meeting last night. The committee was reviewing finishes, interior finishes, which are impressive. They also reviewed the HVAC system, and you'll be happy to know that there are actually several different options for accommodating fresh air. They're designing in more air exchange with the outside air, which reduces the opportunity for virus and so forth. And they're also discussing options potentially for additional air decontamination. So, I guess in some ways, it's fortunate that the design process has extended us through this time of COVID, because certainly it's heightened the awareness of and the importance of proper air circulation and the potential installation of air decontamination processes. The committee is also beginning to develop a list, an add-alts list, which is fairly standard, which the committee will review and prioritize at their next meeting, this all with an eye to get the most long-term value for the money that is spent today. So, that is work that they're doing. Committee also began to review at a high level at least the security systems, and they will not probably be discussing that publicly for obvious reasons anytime in the future. So, that discussion will happen in executive session, according to one of the executive session provisions. I do want to just remind council and the public that, as I've repeated at several meetings, the architectural work is ongoing. The 90% drawings will be completed later this month. They'll be submitted to the MSBA at the end of the month, possibly early in September if the MSBA moves their deadline. But regardless, the architects will be ready by the end of August for that submission. They're also prepping for another cost estimate based on the 90% design drawings, and that happens within the next month or so as well. The 100% drawings will be completed in October, reviewed and approved, and then in November, anticipate going out to bid with award and construction beginning in December with a July 2020 completion date. As I've mentioned before, the project continues to be on budget, and obviously, the split between the town, there's a split in cost share between the town and the state. The state reimburses us approximately $33,828,000 on an $80,600,000 project. And that comes from the Commonwealth yearly until the bond is paid off. The next Mitchell School Building Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 17, at 5:30. And anybody wanting more information can certainly look at Bridgewater School, sorry, All of the presentations, all of the studies, all of the reports, all of the minutes for meetings are, can be found right there. So, I encourage folks to look at that. That is what I have on the Mitchell School. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton on the Mitchell School project?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. Dutton, you said that the demolition took shorter than expected. Will that in any way speed up the project?
It's unlikely that the project will be sped up significantly because of that. The draw, obviously, the bid process for the new building is on a timeline that depends more upon MSBA review and committee work on the 100% construction drawings than it does on the demo of the old building. So, probably not a substantial difference in the timeline.
So, I didn't think there would be. I just wanted to make sure we said that. And so, my next question is, given that it took less time than expected, did we save money on that project?
Unlikely that we'll save money on the demo, but certainly, it will not be over-budget by any, under any circumstances.
Okay. Then, you mentioned add-alts. Could you go into a little bit more of that on whether the conception that was originally given to voters is what's going to be delivered, or if what's going to be delivered is spending as much money as the voters approved?
Nope. That's an excellent question, and it's best answered by giving you an example, although the committee hasn't made any decisions on prioritizing or even creating the add-alts yet. But as people, some people may know, many public buildings have terrazzo flooring in them. And terrazzo flooring is a stone product ground to a shine, and it lasts effectively 100 years or more. That, right now, the architect is specking, I believe, a rubber floor. And so, that is, that is something that requires probably more maintenance and upkeep than a terrazzo floor and does not last, certainly does not last 100 years. So, one of the add-alts that may be presented to bidding contractors is to find out what it would actually cost to do a terrazzo floor in the lobby area versus a rubber floor, which does not have the same life expectancy. So, those are choices that the committee will have to make and decide and prioritize as they move through them. But ultimately, when I say it's a trade-off, the value that we get for today's money, we want to make sure that we maximize the value we get for today's money and putting in a longer-term floor will help.
Given the fact that we were told, at least I believe we were told, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and there are plenty of people on this call who have been at the meetings, who can correct me if I'm wrong, feel free to send me an email, guys, that a useful life of a school building is 30 years, and then we'd have to replace it. Why would we put in a 100-year floor? That's just a question. You don't have to answer it. But those are questions you need to think about as you go to these meetings. And my last question that I do need an answer to is, is this project being run by the town or by the school district?
That's a project that is run, according to the MSBA, is run by the school district. It's a project that, that is, we've partnered, obviously, with the school district in creating the committee, but it, the school building committee itself is a subcommittee of the school. I do think there's some confusion about that, but it is, it is run by the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. FY '21 revenue versus budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me quickly run through, and you get more on this from the finance director at either the first or second September meeting. But just so you know, we did close out FY '20 slightly better than anticipated. The general fund, after all the addition/subtractions, was roughly $700,000 to the positive. That's good news. So, how that calculates into our free cash position, we'll just, we'll just have to see. Golf also closed better than expected with a lower deficit than it was projected. Same with the transfer station. Water and sewer closed as expected with surpluses, budgeted surpluses that will be allocated to their respective capital reserves to offset the upcoming capital projects in both those areas. FY '21 is, so far, so good. We've been tracking, as you know, we track all of the invoicing that we do meticulously. Right now, we are projecting no serious issues with quarter-one real estate payments. We show a little over 93% payment rate, which is not out of line with years past, which is very good news. Just as a matter of information, the council might be interested to know that a little over half, 55%, of those payments were made through mortgage companies. About 22% were paid via the payment processor, the PO box, by mail, essentially. Little over 15% were paid via mail or Dropbox directly at Town Hall, and 7.5% were paid online via the website. So, that's certainly an increase in online use of the online portals, which is good news. But as I mentioned, we do continue to watch tax and utility payments weekly, just to make sure that we can very carefully identify any negative trends. Fortunately, right now, we've got a positive trend, so we'll knock on wood that we keep that. Another, just another related item on the collections, as everybody knows, August 1st or August 3rd was the due date for taxes. So, when we get our quarterly due dates, we invariably get inundated with phone calls and emails. And I do want you to know that the collector's office does track, Collector Treasurer's office does track their phone calls and the response time. And so, they are quite adamant about doing that to make sure that we get responses to people in a timely manner, especially around tax due date. But the office did ask me to remind people, when you call, to leave a message and a name and a phone number within the voicemail, so that we can return the call. Without that, it's hard to return the call. Another little piece of what we think is good news on the state budget front for 2021, we are hoping that the Baker administration and the legislature's commitment to fund unrestricted aid at our, what were our FY 2020 levels, really does come to fruition. This would mean that we'd have a state aid commitment of a little over $3.8 million. And the district, school district's commission, commitment would be just under $23 million, about $22.7 million for education funding. So, again, we are very optimistic about what they're saying, but they are committing to those numbers until October 31st, and we are not sure what federal aid will look like. I think the legislature and the state is waiting for some commitment on federal aid before they make further commitments to a budget beyond October 31st. So, that is, that is what I have on that, and happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton on the budget? Mr. Dutton, I have one question, probably more from my edification or anything else. So, if the state is able to give state aid for fiscal year '20, and obviously, we budgeted for a reduction, I think, of 10%, if that comes through, the excess within the budget, does that have to go as one-time cash? Or is it able to be allocated as the year goes on if we're still getting that level of aid?
Again, this is something we look at, you know, week to week. But I would, I would say that generally, the concern, even if we get level, what would be 2020-level funding for both state aid and education, I think universally, people that sit in my seat or the superintendent's seat are becoming increasingly concerned about FY '22 and being able to fund FY '22, because if this doesn't get much better and the economy doesn't make a very substantial rebound, it'll be putting pressure on federal and state and local-level budgets. So, the short answer is, if there's additional revenues, those potentially could be budgeted. But on the other hand, we are very carefully watching what potential problems we could have in FY 2022.
Thank you. All righty. COVID-19 update.
Happy to report that Bridgewater cases have been very steady. In fact, we're now down to zero reported active cases. We've had well over 250 within Bridgewater. Our website, I believe, says 158 active cases. That does not account for the DOC cases or cases that happened at the DOC. So, that is very good news, and kudos to the fire department, as well as the police department personnel who have managed this, managed to respond to incidents and taken sufficient care. managed to respond to incidents and taken sufficient care and instituted sufficiently satisfactory protocols that we've kept infection rates of our town staff to a minimum. That's, that's good news as well. On CARES Act funding reimbursement, we are scheduled to get a little over $30,000 on August 10th. And the Plymouth County Commissioners will be delivering that check right to the Academy Building. So certainly, any councilors interested, I'll send out more specific time and place and all that. But certainly, you're welcome to, to come to that. We did get notification yesterday that FEMA has approved our FEMA fund, our FEMA reimbursement request, which quite frankly, is record-breaking time. For anybody that's dealt with FEMA in the past, usually it can take years sometimes. So that's a record-breaking pace. We submitted in the amount of $336,000. We were approved for that amount, and we get 75% of that, which is $252,000. That's just part of how FEMA operates. And we'll, we'll see that reimbursement coming in. The balance of $84,000 is actually already been submitted for, to Plymouth County for CARES Act funding, and once they confirm that FEMA has approved, then we suspect Plymouth County will approve the $84,000 request out of the CARES Act funding. So we are in good shape there, getting reimbursements, and obviously, very pleased with FEMA's, FEMA's rapid turnaround, which again, is quite surprising. So in, I know, certainly as the council knows, we do have employees officially back in the building. Everybody is on, for the most part, on a schedule. Given limitations on how many people we can have, however, the, the number of bodies that we generally have in, in the building or in the neighborhood, probably 10 to 12 at any one time. And, and when, obviously, as council knows, and the public may not, but when not in the building, all Academy Building employees, all administrative staff who are not in their office, normal office workplaces are working remotely. And as of right now, we're hoping that state guidance will allow us to open to the public in September. But as I've mentioned, I think to several councilors, based on the most recent news, it's evident that things change almost daily. So the guidance that we get, we'll have to see how, what kind of guidance we get as the days, as the opening day becomes, comes closer and closer to see if we can actually get that done. Certainly, that's my hope. I've also been asked when we can resume meetings in the Academy Building. And I know that's, that there certainly are a few councilors very anxious to get back, as are we, quite frankly. But again, right now, in this, in this part one of Phase Three, we're constrained by occupancy limitations as well as technology. And we're working on the technology as we speak so that I hope by the time we actually get, can get back, we'll have no problem. Currently, in terms of occupancy, the square footage would allow for probably nine to 10 to 11 people in the council room, and that's it. So, so I'm hoping when, when we get back in there, hopefully in September again, that the entire council can come back and we can have some level of public attendance in the building as well. So, but again, we have to remain somewhat nimble, just, just in terms of what we can do and the protocols and such. So, so if there's the expected second phase of COVID, obviously, we will change our planning accordingly. So, and I think I mentioned, we are addressing the technology issue so that at least we can get that going, and technology won't be a holdup when occupancy is not. So, so that is what I have on that. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Not a question, just more of a statement to Mr. Dutton to say, I think we should take the time we've had in the last few months to figure out a way to allow a Zoom meeting or whatever technology it may be that people from around the community don't have to be in the chamber to be participating in the meeting. That, you know, we have, we have people with young children at home who can't leave them there. I remember, I believe it was when we were talking about marijuana, there was somebody who was saying that, you know, they had to leave their child with the babysitter, and they would be crying when they get home because they wouldn't go to bed. Because, you know, that's just the way their child was, which is fine. But this person had enough passion about it to show up to the council chamber. I'd like that person to have the ability to be home and put their children to bed and also be able to talk about an issue that's important to them. And so I'd like to encourage you to think that way going forward. Thank you.
That's a point very well taken, and I think it's safe to say that we're, we're not going to go back to, you know, in-person only. I think we'll have, whether it's Zoom or some other platform, we'll definitely have an interactive process and interactive capabilities.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to local business survey results.
Survey results, so I will tell you that we asked businesses, specifically food and beverage service establishments, which we, we have more licensing control over, what we could do to assist in, in their business reopening. It certainly was not a scientific survey. I, I sent something out directly from me, asked very specific questions. And we got a range of responses back, all, nothing negative, thankfully. But, but, but I am pleased with the response. Five of the roughly 25 businesses wrote back to say that they simply appreciated our reaching out. About four of those asked for some sort of expedited inspections. And this was prior to when we actually were allowed to go and inspect. And we certainly came up with a way to expedite inspections so that we could get people up and going as soon as they possibly could. So, so that was good. A couple, two specifically asked how detailed a plan we need, we required in order for them to reopen. And we responded that just, just a few, honestly, just a few sentences and a very rough sketch on a piece of paper showing where they were going to accommodate outdoor seating and what safety plans they had in place were, were all we needed and all we asked for. One establishment asked if we could guarantee approval of a permanent alteration of premises if they went forward and moved the fence to increase their temporary outdoor occupancy. And obviously, we said we could not guarantee any kind of council vote, but we could certainly support an application that made it to the council. And we did make sure that that application reached the council in a timely manner. Two private clubs asked for guidance, which we provided, and I believe both of those are open now. And we did not deny any request for alteration of premises. And all establishments were, were quite, fortunately, were very sensitive to the safety of their patrons. So the health and building inspectors put together sort of a tag team of inspections. They were, were very accommodating and inspected as soon as any request came in. And more often than not, they visited some establishments prior to getting a request just to make sure that they could provide some guidance. So, so that was, those were the results. As I say, it certainly was not a scientific survey, but, but those were, those were the rough numbers. And we continue to reach out and just ask how things are going with those businesses. And, and although I don't think things are going great, certainly, you know, they appreciate us reaching out, and we're more than happy to do anything within our power to, to help, help guide or help accommodate their businesses. So that, that's what I have on that one.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dutton? All right, seeing none. Please make sure to reach out to Mr. Dutton for any items you'd like for him to cover in our next scheduled meeting. As Mr. Dutton, what I'd like to put on there right now is the Broad Street project update for our next meeting. The same, so if anyone has anything now, or just reach out to Mr. Dutton? Okay. Moving on to Item J, discussions, establishing advisory committee for inclusion, diversity, and equity. Mr. Gallagher, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I thought I would put this on the agenda tonight for us to have a discussion. I know we've had some long discussions tonight already, but I don't anticipate this being a, a long discussion. But I would hate to see the presentation that was made at our last meeting, last full meeting by the Citizens for Civility and Respect to go without a discussion by us. And I think that many communities throughout the state and perhaps throughout the country are establishing some sort of advisory committees to look at their communities in the sense of the diversity within their community and how to include them in the process of being involved in, in their town, whether it be in civic affairs or local government or, or other areas. So I, I would like, I put this on the agenda for, for us to discuss the feasibility of establishing some sort of a inclusion, diversity committee to see what we can do as far as outreach to go in the community to see if there are people in the community that feel as though that they're not being included, whether, no matter what their background is, and to see what we can do to get them more involved. So that's kind of the discussion that I want to have tonight to see if there's a, if there's, you know, an appetite amongst us to put together some sort of advisory committee for this particular purpose. And I've been more than happy to draft up a, I guess it would have to be a, I guess it would have to be some sort of ordinance or in addition to the administrative code, I think.
Yeah, you would have to create it by, and obviously, the typically comes through the town manager's offices with other committees, but you could draw it up. You could create the committee by ordinance.
Any questions, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I think Mr. Gallagher is on to, on to a good point. We had a nice presentation at our last meeting, and we could kind of continue the momentum. But I'm not sure that we need to go down the ordinance road quite yet to amend the town code. What maybe I'd suggest is that we create an ad hoc committee to advise the town council on steps to take and have the town manager be a part of it. That way, you know, we've, we've got, we're getting input because I think what I heard Mr. Gallagher say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gallagher, is we want to learn more, and, and we want to, you know, learn from people who have had different experiences than perhaps we've had. So if we did it as an ad hoc committee and figured out what ordinances might be appropriate to bring out from that discussion, I think it might be even more impactful.
Anybody else? Mr. Roshan?
Thank you. And I just, no questions really, other than to thank Councilor Gallagher for not letting this just go by with a presentation and really showing some action on behalf of the town as a community and the town council to make some changes and to really understand some of the issues that are some folks experience in this town and other communities. And to Councilor Fitzgibbons' point, really like the idea of the ad hoc committee and bringing that bounce back so that we can all hear how we can improve town government and just civility in town. So again, just wanted to thank those gentlemen for their thoughts.
Then that's what I'll thank you, Mr. President. I thank you, Mr. Roshan. Now, I'll put something together for our next meeting, September 8th, for an ad hoc committee to, to be formed, and, and let's, there's other discussion on that, just to see.
No, I think the only thing, the only thing I would add was, is, I should say, if there's any mechanism that we can put in place to get diverse views on anything in town, I am 100% for. And the more public input we have in all parts of government, the better government is. So I'll look forward to what you bring forward, Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. George, Mrs. Loesch has her hand up.
Yep, Mrs. Loesch.
Yeah, Mr. Gallagher, as you create whichever you're going to create, I want to be mindful that diversity and inclusion and equity isn't something that is going to be fixed in 36 years.
Mrs. Loesch, you're breaking up.
Perhaps my internet is cutting out. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Yep.
Okay, good. I just want to call out that this is not going to be something that ad hoc committees are going to solve in 36 years. And that's, you know, we'd love to hear it. And diversity and inclusion is going to take a lot of time to change.
Right, I mean, and again, I couldn't hear a lot of what you said, but I think, I think I get the, the generality of what you're trying to say. The ad hoc committee, I hope, is a quick, a quick look at this, and perhaps it could stem out to a permanent advisory committee within the, within the administrative code. So that's step one, I guess. But I'll, I'll reach out to you to, to talk to you because I couldn't really understand a lot of, you're breaking up.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't like things to take forever. I like things to go quickly.
Any other? Mr. Roshan? You're on mute.
Apologize about that. I would just add too, I mean, we have a fantastic resource right here in town, and that's Bridgewater State University, who's been on the forefront with the Martin Richard Social Justice Institute. They've just created a task force on campus. So I'd also think that it might be helpful even to include them in some way. They could probably provide a lot of resources to the town that we don't have access to. And a lot of work that they've completed over the last several years in these areas would be helpful to the town.
Great, thank you.
The only other thing I would mention relative to the ad hoc committee is if you are going to create it as an ad hoc committee under the admin code, it has to be for a specified period of time, which I think is piggybacking off of what Ayesha was saying. I know her line kind of broke up. So that's just something for you all to think about when you create whatever body you, you intend on creating.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Okay, do we have any committee reports? Okay, seeing none. We've already done legislation for action. We don't have any old business. We do have new business. Ordinance D FY20001, general ordinance, new regular agenda item, finance committee report. This is brought on by Councilor Wood. Councilor Wood, would you like to discuss?
Yes, thank you. As everyone here is highly aware, I was absent from the council for six months. And during that period, a lot of people may not know, the town, town manager appointed me as one of his appointees to the finance committee. the town town manager appointed me as one of his appointees to the Finance Committee, which gave me good insight into a different view of the town council. I created this because one of the things I saw that was occurring was that although the charter calls for a more formal process, over the years, often the council president would read the results of a vote on a particular legislation without much discussion from the Finance Committee, and there was no place for the Finance Committee. As we just saw, there's, you know, committee reports on her on her agenda. But that doesn't invite the Finance Committee to send someone as a liaison to the council and discuss matters. During the period I was on the Finance Committee, I we discussed the possibility of the Finance Committee extending, or actually just just not extending its responsibilities, but living up to its responsibilities, where it should be the financial expert of the town outside of the Finance Director and the town manager's staff. And really suggesting policies to the council in order to create new policies, or things like capital planning and whatnot. And I believe that by adding an agenda item, it may not always be used, but it gives an opportunity for the Finance Committee to send a representative to either talk about something we may have on the agenda or policy items that they may wish to introduce to the council and give an opportunity to improve the the communication between the two. I've said that the Finance Committee is really the second most strategic strategically important body in Bridgewater. But often, it's it's a vote on something and then kind of follow up on what budget and finance is doing from the town council and not not originating ideas as I hope it would. So that's why I introduced this, is just to give the opportunity for the Finance Committee on a regular basis to come and speak to the council on matters they've discussed and possibly take back, you know, ideas or have a dialogue that way. And foremost, it avoids an issue that I saw a couple of months ago where we voted on something with an amendment, and the amendment didn't actually make it into the discussion at the town council level. I know it came across with some communication, but it was never taken up as a discussion point and as during the town council meeting, and a standing item would certainly allow that to happen with the liaison. And that's the story behind this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. I'll entertain a motion to refer this to rules and procedures?
So move second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick thought to Mr. Wood. As we go forward, I think this would, instead of being a standalone ordinance, be an amendment to the town council's rules and procedures. So if you just want to look into that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the intention here. Is the agenda is actually an item within the rules, rules of the council. And so we're inserting an item inside that agenda item in the rules, rules process.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Gallagher is much like Han Solo at the moment, frozen overnight.
I can feel his pain.
Are you there, Mr. Gallagher?
I'm here, yeah.
Oh, I called your name for a roll call vote.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wood? Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Next, item B. D FY 20-002, general ordinance. SFI paperwork reduction, creation of an SFI short form. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to comment on this?
That's Mr. Woods.
I mean, Mr. Woods, excuse me.
Thank you. So we've all filled out the SFI form. It's, I think it's nine pages in length, and I filled it out multiple times per year because of various things. It gets repetitive to just check off the NA box or whatever. So the short form is intended to simplify the process for the town clerk's office and everyone else that has to fill out these forms. And if nothing's changed since the, since the last time you filled out the form, you should be able to use the short form to, and if, as you've read through, obviously, the legislation there. If you answer, I think it was yes to any of the questions, then you must fill out the long form and put those details in the long form. But otherwise, this should simplify the process of submission and filling it out and simplify the work that the town clerk's office has to do.
Any questions for Mr. Wood? I do have actually a question for Mr. Rollins for a point of, I'll say clarification. If we do develop a short form SFI, does that have to be reviewed by you or someone at Beacon Hill before we can implement this, or is this something that we can decide to do?
No, you you guys can all decide to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, this requires a roll call vote. Oh, actually, I take that step back. Say that again, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Motion to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Gallagher? Nine in favor, none against.
All right. We're moving on to Order O FY 21 010. Assessment of Cost of Public Improvement, First Street. I'll turn this over to the town manager.
Mr. President, this is very simply the council's follow-up action to actually implement the assessments required under your previous vote so that the assessor can send out, prepare and send out betterment bills for the installation of sewer and the associated pieces of that First Street project.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? All right, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to Council Order O FY 21-011. Protect World War I Memorial. Mr. Wood, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, you you will also see that the order for 11 is essentially the same thing. Maybe Mr. Gallagher and I should have gotten together on this a little bit. Mine, mine is just simply, let's get a temporary barrier up to protect that that monument, because the the traffic there is just a, it's just going to be another time before somebody knocks it over. It's totally unprotected now. And, you know, I've seen it that way for, I think, about a year maybe. And I think it's just a simple barrier to protect it right now, and maybe, you know, Counselor Gallagher's item is a little bit more long term, but that it's just essentially protect it and move on to something else.
Any questions?
Go to Public Safety or some other committee.
To Public Safety.
Mr. Gallagher, you have your hand up?
Well, I mean, I think that I mean, there's going to be a cost associated with anything that you want to do to protect it. But I think that Order, Order 11, Order 12, we'll talk about in a second, I think kind of alleviates the whole thing. I would hate to see an eyesore put in front of it to protect it. I think that, you know, we have a flagpole that's bent and people coming into the common from South Street, and I've got comments from people saying it looks horrible. And if we want to put it a barrier or a Jersey barrier there, it's just to protect it, it's going to, you know, I don't know where you'd put it, first of all, because you've got people that do need to get around on the road. It's been long enough. I I don't know the cost associated with putting another railing in and putting it back to the way it was, or putting a new flagpole up. I think some of the, some of the ways, some of the reasons why we haven't done anything in several months is, you know, because we've been kind of waiting for some of these reports to come in to see what the long term is going to be for the common, which is really going to be long, long term. I think that the fix to this, to this monument, to this area should be to go back and do what we had done for 100 years, and that's put it back to the condition it was in before it was damaged. Unfortunately, this time around, we don't know who damaged it this time, because there's no insurance money to come out to go after. So I think the cost of, the cost of Order 12 would be more than if we just went out and fixed it. The cost of Order 11 would be more than if we just went out and did it and brought it back to be more presentable to the public when they enter our common. But I don't know if you want to refer this out to Public Safety.
I've got Mr. Rushton, Mr. Rushton.
I just wanted to add in to Counselor Gallagher's point, and maybe Counselor Wood will, you know, rescind his proposal, but I agree with Counselor Gallagher that this this is a disgrace. This has to be repaired. We cannot wait any longer. I'm not going to wait for downtown plans. This has to be fixed, and we need to find the funds to make this happen. It's beyond a safety issue. Everybody that passed by this, all of our service members, this just has to get done. I don't want to put it into public safety and talk about a safety issue. This is about doing the right thing by what that represents, and we need to just get it done.
Mr. Wood?
So I agree with long-term view, you know, restore it back with the rail and granite, but I think, I think if we, if we're going to refer them out, I'll be supporting referring both of them to committee, and then the committee can resolve the differences or figure out what the best plan is with the town manager. Then come back with some cost estimates and other refinements to the deal overall. You know, I wasn't, I would prefer to see it restored back to what it is, but I'd prefer to see it this week, excuse me, this week, protected from a truck that may end up going across it, you know, at the end of the week. So, you know, hopefully, we just refer both of them out to the appropriate committee and that committee works through the solution.
Any other questions, comments?
Are we just?
Yes, we're just, we're just on 11 right now.
All right, then I'd make a motion to refer that to the Public Safety Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay. Moving on to Council Order O FY 21-012. Rule 1, guardrail, flagpole repair. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to discuss?
Right, and, you know, I'd like to see the the guardrail repaired, the flagpole repaired, and brought it back to the the condition it was in prior to this. Well, as far as the guardrail goes, prior to the accident, I don't know what caused the damage to the flagpole. I'm not, I'm not sure, but why it's bending. I I don't know if this is really a public safety, you know, area to bring it to, or just bring it to the budget and finance for appropriations, but again, like I said before, I think when you enter the common from South Street or come around the common, I think this is this World War I memorial has been sitting there since since, I think, 1912. Around, over 108 years. And huh, World War I, yeah. 100, 100, 1912, right?
Maybe 1919?
About 1921, 1921, about 100 years it's been there then. So I think that, you know, I don't think the cost of putting those rail up and new flagpole is is asking for too much, and I'd like to see that done, so I'd like to see it referred to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
I'd like to make that motion and ask them to amend it to include a repair cost immediately.
I'd like to hold, hold on. Mr. Sue, Mr. Sue's has been raising his hand. Mr. Suzie, you have a question?
Yes, maybe not a question. Why do we seem to ignore military things in our town? Look what's happening with the building across the street. That was a war memorial. Let's forget it. This thing here. 99 years, he just said, you know. I'm a wet veteran. I know Dennis is, and there's probably a couple of other people here. Every time I go by that thing, I get a feeling right here in my chest. We do so many things in this town, but we can't take care of our war memorial. That, to me, and to a number of other people that I've been talking to, is the number one biggest disgrace. Disgrace of the town management. The council, administrator, everyone. If we can't take care of a memorial to those who served and those who gave the ultimate, what the heck good are we? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just coming back on screen here, hopefully. No, I'd make a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees with, I guess, an instruction to the town manager to provide a cost estimate before our next meeting and have the committees meet and say, yeah, that's good, then we can amend it, then we can vote on it at our next meeting. I mean, let's, as Mr. Gallagher says, he's in favor of getting things done, so let's move it forward quickly.
Second that.
Motion. Okay, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Moving on to Council Resolution R FY 21-001. A resolution supporting first responders. Mr. Fitzgibbons, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, I don't think we need to refer it anywhere. We can just leave it here at the council level, and I'd just like to thank a constituent who reached out to me and asked me to put this on the agenda, and I'd like to thank the council president for this on the agenda, and I'd like to thank the council president for taking it a little bit after we were supposed to send things in, but not before we published the agenda. I appreciate it. So I'm in full support of it, but it's not my idea. I don't want to take credit for it. It was somebody who reached out to me and sent me an email and asked me about it. And, you know, I believe as a representative, I need to bring those things forward.
Any discussion, any questions?
I would just, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Rushton, yep.
I'd just like to add, you know, I had reached out to Council Fitzgibbons. Certainly, I'd like to co-sponsor this and think it's long overdue, just in terms of listening to public safety tonight, dealing with the storm. Both departments stretched extremely thin. This is after months and months without any time off, not taking vacation and those sorts of things. I'd just like to go a little bit deeper, if we could, over time, just think about, as a council, how we could say thank you beyond this. And maybe that is inviting the senior command staff from police and fire in, when we all can meet in person and formally thanking them. But it's got to go just beyond this, in my opinion. There's many men and women who, like I said, have worked countless hours and put themselves really at extreme risk trying to help members of the community remain safe during this time. So, you know, I'll try to work with Council Fitzgibbons to see if we can do something later on, but this certainly is a great step.
And I'm certainly open to having any co-sponsors on this. I have no pride of authorship and happy to have other co-sponsors. Thank you, Mr. Rushton.
Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to move to have this on our agenda for the next scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Is any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All righty. All right, moving on to citizens' comments. Again, this is open to any citizens. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and comments are directed towards the council, but there will not be any exchange. Do we have any residents who would like to speak? Mr. Baumgartner, I see your hand up. Please state your name and your street, please. You're on mute, Mr. Baumgartner. Okay, Sam Baumgartner, Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. Just a few comments. First, I want to thank Mr. Gallagher for bringing up the notion of creating a committee to look at inclusion, diversity, and equity. I also want to say that I'm hopeful that that committee will be able to help do some of the things I asked when I made the presentation for B C C R, or three of us made the presentation at the last meeting about a month ago. I want this ad hoc committee or whatever type of committee it becomes to really be able to delve deeply into what the town is doing. And I had mentioned last time that it should become an oversight body that will really look deeply at town policies and procedures and codes to make sure that we are being truly equitable in everything that we do. So I hope that whatever committee is formed becomes a robust committee. And I also hope that perhaps through that committee that the council will have a listening session and have a separate meeting at some point to listen to the concerns of people in town, especially people of color. And the last comment I want to make is that we had requested, hopefully, that you would buy into the anti-racism pledge that we have put up through the Citizens and Civility website, and to the best of my knowledge, only a few of the councilors have signed on to that. And I think it's important that you make that step because it represents a real commitment to doing this kind of work. So I hope that if you haven't signed on, you will consider doing that. So I look forward to continued discussion on this. And again, I hope that we will come up with some robust ways of really looking at what the town's doing and making sure that we're doing the best we can. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? And do you see anyone?
Yeah.
I do, actually. Ms. Mainville is on, she's probably on like page two of your screen, would like to speak.
There you are, go right ahead. Name and street, please.
I'm Cleone Mainville, I live on 25 Kirk Street, and I wanted to also build on what Sam has said and share my appreciation to you, Mr. Gallagher, for putting this on the agenda. I was very excited to see that this is a priority for the council, and I appreciate all the council members jumping on board to explore this further and really looking to see what comes of this and making sure that this is something that is of substance and that would be integrated within the town government versus it just being a committee that's just talking, really looking to integrate diversity, inclusion, and all that you do. So thank you so much for finding value in exploring this further.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, and I scrolled, I don't see anyone. So councilor comments, I'm going to start with Mr. Gallagher.
First, I have nothing, nothing tonight. Have a good night, everybody.
Mrs. Loesch? Thank you. Mr. Chase?
No, nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rushton?
Unfortunately, I have to break that and just make a brief comment, if I could. I just wanted to mention, as the summer is kind of winding down, and our school district is going to have to, at some point, be coming out with a refined plan for school this fall, remind the citizens that, you know, very appreciative of the school administrators, the staff, all of the parents who have participated in surveys as they try to narrow down what's the best option for our children. It's been a trying time for them to put in lots and lots of hours on this. And beyond just dealing with COVID, don't forget that, as the town manager mentioned, I think Monday night participated in meeting number 46 to the building of the new elementary school. And that's number 46 in our participation, but there's many other subcommittee meetings that happen and try to keep things moving forward. So I just wanted to shout out to them and thank them for all their work. You can't make everybody happy. It's going to be a lot of difficult decisions that have to be made in the next couple of weeks. And, you know, the school committee, town administrators, and the staff that have participated, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the town.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
I think I said enough this evening. Have a nice evening.
Okay, Mr. Colin Bodas?
He's on it.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Don't see him.
I don't see him. Okay, well, if he pops back on. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just like to thank you again, Mr. George, President George, for running a great Zoom meeting. It's very tough to do, and you made it run smoothly. I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate all my council colleagues getting on and debating virtually and talking about things. You know, I appreciate the flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. At our September meeting, I will be doing a formal announcement for the search for a precinct five counselor to fill that seat until the next election. So I'll have that officially announced at the September 8th meeting, and I'll also make sure that we have outlined exactly what the procedures will be. My intent, my belief is, we'll follow the prior procedures that we've had for other appointments as well. And also, as Mr. Ivaldi mentioned, we do have an opening on the Charter Review Committee, so I am asking any and all residents that have any interest in it whatsoever, please reach out to myself. You can do it through our council clerk, but even if you have a little bit of interest, doesn't necessarily mean if you raise your hand, you get involved, but I would love to have conversations with people as that, as well as I've had a fairly good amount of experience with the charter. But we, like anything else, we need additional input, support, diversity, everything we can get our hands on. With that being said, we do not have executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Sorry, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All righty, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You as well.
Good night.